All right, I'd like to call the order. The decision-making meeting of the Town of East Troy Planning Commission for the month of July. I'd like the record to show that Commissioner Gordon has been excused. With that exception, everybody else is present. How we work is on a split-meeting format. Our last meeting was our informational meeting where we collected all of our information. We've gotten a little bit more information in the last two weeks, and tonight is the meeting where we will make a decision. So unfortunately, it's not necessarily open to public comment. It's just for commissioners, and if we have any questions for the applicant, we would ask that question of the applicant. So I'd ask that please don't just chime in. So with what we discussed before the meeting opened, I guess I would ask that you guys maybe review what's proposed here. It has -- I wouldn't say it has nothing to do with the piece of land across Highway J., but everything that is proposed to us, and he is asking of us, is a conditional use of a B-3 zoning on a piece of property that is currently B-3. So he's asking us for a conditional use tonight. That is the agenda item number three. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 7th. Did anybody have any issues with June 7th's minutes?
I just added, in addition to the number four, that was the hobby farm item, the paragraph where register of deeds is noted on. I would ask that we add that a deed restriction enumerating the number of farm animals allowed on the hobby farm be included.
Okay. Any other issues with the minutes from June 7th? All right, I would take a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes with about four seconds.
We have a motion and a second.
Just to clarify your amendment, so you want to amend the decisions?
No, just the add after register of deeds, add that the individual will submit a deed restriction related to the number of farm animals on their farm hobby farm. That was one of the steps in the hobby farm section of the regulatory manual, that that could be a requirement, and the individual volunteers who's already with register of deeds will accomplish that.
All right, with the motion and a second and a clarification, I would take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a lot line adjustment, the CSM at N. 9020 and 9024, Austin Road, East Troy, PET 7000010E, PET 700019. Is anybody here for that agenda item? I know that the applicant did reach out to me and said, you know, gave me a couple, like, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? And not being his civil engineer, I didn't really give him a whole lot of guidance. It was just that, basically, he's going to have to do a little bit more research. So agenda item number two is going to be tabled to a further meeting.
Do we need a motion to that? I'm just wondering, is tabling it allows him to come back and not get the fees?
It does. All right, then the next item on the agenda is a conditional use, W. 1602 County Road J., parcel number PA 18180001, Cash Bar Enterprises. We did get some more clarification from the applicant. If, I don't know, Bill, if you want to take the lead?
Well, I would like, Mr. Chairman, I would like you reconsider public comment on this item, simply because on July 5th, the applicant provided us with new information. So that new information was not present on the, in the packet for the July 5th meeting. Consequently, it would be impossible for residents to know about the new information. Therefore, I'm sensing some of the individuals here tonight now know that information and feel it in the town's best interest to comment.
Was the new information posted anywhere, or?
It was posted after the meeting on Facebook as well as on the official website.
Our normal.
It was actually above because it was new information.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I am concerned that this commission may have discussed some of the topics in the new information, which may be a legal issue.
What do you mean by that?
I mean that if we must be working with the information we're providing, and we were provided information plus, and I think we may have talked about some of the topics in that information plus, which the general public would not have known about, and therefore I think it's out of bounds, I think we possibly could just acknowledge that procedural error and.
Well, so our procedure is informational meeting, go out in two weeks, research. So if we were to research something, and I may come up with something from Darren Schwanke at the county, I don't share that till our next meeting, which is not a public comment meeting. It's a decision-making meeting that I put out there, and now we use that as our decision, in our decision-making process. I'm not trying to cut out the general public on this. It's just, that's our, that's how we work, and if we table this, then do we take public comment on the next one for three, four, five meetings?
For me, the difference is, we receive new information, we accepted that information, and then we talked about it.
Well, when did we, well, you and I talked about it, but we didn't talk about it in open?
Oh, I think we did. For example, if I would take the second handout, which is the one we got on July 5th, and paged and compared it to the information that I prepared for the meeting, there are differences. And one of them was, for example, the Lake Management District and the peers, and that was not in the first packet, but it was in the second packet, and I believe we discussed it. And I think that's, that just was an error in judgment on our part in not staying to the information that was posted that we should have discussed. You know, but I think.
But I understand it, but things come up all the time in our meetings that we discuss that may not have been in the posted. Then, in the next two weeks, it has been posted.
But my point is.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have our discussion if we don't feel like we can make a decision tonight? We can push it off one more meeting, and then, I mean, maybe public comment could come in via email, then I could, you know, bring it in. This is just irregular, and we've had some contentious, we've had expanding the, you know, the town hall, we've had some contentious Lindy's, you know, the hotel. We've never deviated from our, from our, the way we do things.
I think if we could incorporate into our discussion differences between the original plan and the revised plan, I think some of them are minor edits, and other changes might have been more material.
What I'm, most importantly, what I'm trying to say is, what the general public knows is very important to open meetings, and what we act upon is important. But we should not be acting on more than what they know when we invite them to an open meeting, which I think we did. More important, and here, I have, there's twelve people I don't know, they're here, they didn't come for the lot line adjustment, so I'm wondering if minimally, we don't allow them to speak, we ask if they're here for or against the project.
But, but then where is the line drawn? Do I do that at every meeting? But if no one comes, great? Because if they cared that much, or it's been posted, the fact that they didn't come to the last meeting, no offense, is not my problem, I guess. Again, I'm not trying to steamroll the public. I'm trying to keep the format of our commission solid, and we can still have our discussion. They can listen in. It is a public meeting, absolutely. We can have our discussion, and again, if we don't feel like we can make a decision tonight, and, you know, then we don't, and then there may be an opportunity for people to reach out via email, Facebook, whatever the formal channels to reach out on.
I'm interested in having discussion on that. If there's a lot here, it's not our typical plan division or rezone, and.
Well, it's not a rezone, it's a conditional use.
That's what I mean.
Sure.
There's a lot here. There were a number of clarifications, you know, that we asked the applicant for quite a few questions. We got a lot of clarifications on a number of points. I think it's worthwhile reviewing that, and if we feel there's, and to me, the way I look at it, and, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but if we frame it in terms of that conditional use, unless there, and this has come up previously, months back, but if there's, within those revisions or clarifications, what have you, the conditional use, you're still asking for X and Y and Z, and maybe offensive moves or something, it's, they're still asked, it's still the same.
These are the parameters, you know, in the clarifications that we would act on, positively, negatively, whatever, so.
Being a town supervisor, and forever being scrutinized for transparency and openness and full disclosure, again, I would advocate that we, one time, allow residents to speak for or against this proposal, and ask at the front end, every one of them, was there new information that came to light for you? And then we'll know if we were doing a good job getting the information out. Now, I don't know if you're the chair and you rule on it, or we make a motion on it, but I just, I like the idea of inclusion. I'm afraid of the idea of the possibility of neighborhoods being disenfranchised with a new business, and problems that Town Hall's going to be working on for years and years and years.
I get where you're coming from. This is our process, and this is the process we've done forever, and it's never been an issue to open it back up for public comment, ever. This would be the first time ever. So that's where I'm very hesitant to allow public comment once again. It's out there, we're not hiding it. Here's the transparency. Here's what he's asking for. Here's the points he's asking for, and we've heard two public comments in favor of last week, or two weeks ago, and now I believe it's up to the commissioners to make the decision. I've, that's, again, I don't know if I can rule and bang my gavel and say we're going to continue on, because it's never happened before.
Our decision is a recommendation to the town board.
Correct.
That the town board will, you know, there will be a meeting, will give the public the opportunity to speak at that time, too.
That's a good point.
I think, to me, our primary, one of our primary responsibilities is to frame the decision, craft it in a way for the town board to, you know, to review and discuss further.
So if I understand correctly, tonight, we only discuss amongst ourselves, we can't even engage the.
We can't engage, we can't engage the applicant, yes.
Whether you're here then, if I may, if individuals are here then, to speak for or against the proposal, they will not be afforded a citizen's comment period tonight, but the next available one is that Monday night's Town Hall meeting.
Correct.
This would be on that agenda, agenda?
Yes.
That's a question, is a point of procedure. If you approve this conditional use permit, does that immediately authorize the request of the permit to go ahead, or does that have to be finally, it's just a question of procedure?
So the procedure is, we act on it, we advise to the town board, the town board makes their decision, and they advise Walworth County. The ultimate decision is Walworth County. So he's not going to start building tomorrow morning if we were to approve this. So that's the procedure of this board. And, sorry, I'm just not going to engage too much procedural stuff.
I have just a question.
No, and I answered it.
Thank you.
So I would like to have discussion amongst commissioners, and then any questions of the applicant?
So I did prepare a document, I distributed it to the commissioners outlining five, possibly six, areas of concern that I have. Should I read it?
Certainly, yeah.
So my first concern is the actual conditional use request by the applicant, which I'm referring to as Cash Bar Enterprises CBS. They are, the condition which is our A, a tavern and bar, and the second conditional use is public assembly. I further state that both are permitted uses on a B-3 waterfront property. A B-3 waterfront property generally provides orderly and appropriate regulations to ensure compatibility of a diverse use of retail customer service establishments typically found in a watered-up property. The applicant did not ask for a restaurant principal use or for a conditional use called establishment serving food or beverages for consumption outside of a primary rest structure. And I note that there is no primary structure on this proposed site, so this option is muted. Nonetheless, food, food service, food trucks are an important part of CBE's business plan, and I believe this commission ought to discuss the restaurant food conditional use needs and address them with the applicant as part of this planning process.
Well, why don't we take that first one?
Thank you.
How would you like to, I mean, would you like to ask the applicant about that? Would you like to potentially amend the conditional use to say it includes food? This one's a little bit gray to me because he's not serving food, he's not, well, he's serving food. He's not preparing food. It comes on a truck and gets served and sat down at, you know, a picnic table or something like that.
It's very tricky, but we are limited with the B-3 uses. It's tricky because there are two regulatory agencies that are going to be working with these food trucks, Department of Agriculture Trade and Consumer Protection and the Department of Health Services. They're going to license these.
Correct.
They, I know for a fact that food trucks do not meet the definition of a restaurant. So they're mobile, they're, they don't have the ingredients it takes to be called a restaurant. So we're.
Then what's your concern with him having food on the site via food trucks?
I don't know, I don't see how it fits into his condition. What is the conditional use? You know, it's.
Are you asking me?
No, we're just having a discussion.
I think it's a subject, it's intricate, it's integral to the business.
I understand what you're saying. Is it a bar? Is it a restaurant? Is it, you know?
Well, it's a tavern and bar with public assembly. Those are the conditional uses being requested for this applicant.
But he's also told us that he wants to have food there via food truck, but.
To me, the request was, what the applicant's looking for in that regard was pretty clear. I, you know, food trucks, you know, I mean, I don't know, I'm not familiar with USDA regulations, food service regulations, but.
Nor do we need to be, you know, that.
But I understand they want to have the food trucks, and I think it was, I want to say it was two food trucks, maybe three.
Two.
But for B-3, do you, you need to be labeled, you know, what are you, right? He can't do anything because he says he's going to do it as planned. I mean, there are options here for food service.
Right, so it's within, it's within the allowed conditional uses. I guess, I'm not sure what the concern is. If you're saying he's not asking for food service, I kind of disagree because he's showing it on his plans, and he's telling us that that's what he's planning on doing. Where do you want him to put it in writing, on the application?
I don't have that.
I just think the whole packet definitely included food via food truck.
A B-3 waterfront business has multiple food.
I get it.
Related requests that he could make. There's no request for food service on this, and it, that just seems odd to me. And I, the only thing I would request here is that we ask the county in their declarative decision to clarify for us if there's any further need to identify or to zone for food.
Well, it's Zone B-3, so we're not changing any zoning again. Again, he's given us a whole packet of what he's asking for. I guess I disagree that he's not asking for food service.
So on the application, other description, former double D's, where we will have two food trucks offering a variety of global cuisine, lots of patio seating, and a container bar. That was the request. I don't think we normally ask for a legal description of the conditional uses and how it fits with county zoning, because county zoning will, the zoning administrators will apply zoning regs to the application to clarify that to the zoning agency.
Yeah, frankly, I didn't think the decision lied with us, if it is, if it is an issue. So number two, if I may.
Well, if we could, just to put number one to bed, are you now satisfied with number one, the way it's written? Are you still looking for something to be changed?
In an advisory way, I would like the county to validate that there is no need for a principal or conditional use related to food at this B-3 property.
But I think he's asking us for that. That's what he's asking for. Am I not?
We could incorporate, make sure that that statement's incorporated fully in the minutes. Those do get forwarded to the board and then to the county. Can I make one comment?
Not yet.
Okay.
How do you like that for clarity sake?
I think this is, there's enough here where we ought to be clear on, you know, what we're discussing, summarize our discussion, incorporate that into what's recorded, so that the town board and the county have some insight as to what we discussed.
Sure. All right, if you want to go on to item two then?
My second area of concern is that the Cash Bar Enterprises has requested a public assembly, which is a permitted conditional use. The applicant plans or suggests up to 174 site events, including 74 music venue dates originating from a quote "small band" or a "small band stand," end quote. During the 24-week business cycle, other proposed events, including bingo, trivia, maker markets, farmers markets, as well as quote "private events," end quote, and fishing tournaments are described. Do these events qualify under the conditional use of public assembly? In addition, might each of these events actually be a county-regulated special event needing a county permit? Lastly, are the proposed private events by definition a public assembly? And is a fishing tournament, presumably conducted off-premises, a permitted public assembly for this business location? Note, this may bring into question the Lake Management, the Pila Lake Management District deed restriction allowances as it relates to vessel mooring or entering the Cash Bar Enterprises business site from the two peers which were recently identified as part of the CBE plan.
So.
This public, what's the definition of public assembly?
I don't have that in front of me. I didn't bring my book, but, again, what are you looking for here?
Is it a valid conditional use? Are these, or are these special events that need to be regulated?
So my talk with the county is that some of it would have to be permitted by the county.
And like a fishing tournament, regulated by DNR, so there's, I mean, there's regulations that are in there. Can I, so you mentioned 174 site events on the applicant's plan. Where's that, is that, that's in the packet, printed PowerPoint?
The one that we received on July 5th, that was delineating events. I'm, I am assuming, I may be wrong, but it's a 24-week season, so a weekly bingo, a weekly trivia, every Friday night, every Saturday night, two large band events, 24 jazz or acoustic midweek events, 12 maker markets, farmer markets, 16 private events, 24 fishing tournaments. That equals 174.
I'm thinking he's saying that there's a possibility of having one of those events take place, but I don't think he's saying they're happening on a consistent basis.
So, I mean, now that could definitely be a condition of approval that, okay, you're limited to 10 events, 20 events, you know, something like that. I don't know that he's going to be open 174 days.
Well, I think that's, I'm guessing there could be multiple events at one time.
Could be.
We could be running trivia room and having acoustics music.
Sure.
To me, these events fit within the B-3 zoning and allowable conditional uses.
Well, again, I wonder aloud and pose to the commission the definition of a public assembly. Does that include a private event? That doesn't seem public to me. That seems private.
Sure.
Can't come in here today. It's private party. That's not public. So do we disallow private events? You're saying, well, it's part of his plan. He should be able to do that. It's a conflict in understanding. So I think we need guidance from the regulatory, final decision people on this one.
As to what a public event is defined?
If the identified events are, in fact, public assemblies, or what are they, special events? Can they be limited?
But can we generically say, what is an event? If he's open on a Saturday and 40 people happen to show up? Or something that he, that he puts an advertisement out for and says it's the Jazz Festival, or whatever it may be?
To me, they're not even really events. It's just standard business with our restaurant type area. There are capacity limitations and parking.
Correct.
So to me, it's not even anything, I think it was really just a clarification of how the business was going to operate.
Might be used.
A public assembly or a special event, to me, is where you're having to, you know, you need special parking regulations.
Going beyond your capacity or something, or.
Yeah, that's all I am.
I would, we don't seem to know the answer, but I think getting at the answer.
There is a definition for public assembly. Is that what you're asking about?
I'm asking in relationship to the applicant's request. He's limited on conditional uses. This one, double D's also had for public assembly. Then he delineates what those public assemblies are, and I'm wondering if those actually meet the definition of a, if they don't, and it's just a normal business practice.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Could you just read maybe the definition of public assembly per the county? I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to read the whole thing, what you're trying to do along, or just the kind of relevant point that stuck out to me?
Why don't you do the relevant point?
Yeah, the relevant point would be that, hold on a second. This shall apply to all public gatherings, rallies, assemblies, or festivals at which attendance is greater than 5,000 persons. I don't think that applies to this situation.
That was kind of my layman's understanding, too. You know, so we.
I think there's probably a number associated with, and there's also already a limit to the number of people.
Correct, 134, I believe, was the number.
Something like that.
But when we have, when there's the 4th of July, that's what goes on in the village, right? That's a public assembly of some sort, I mean, there's special considerations.
Again, I appreciate the definition. Again, I, I appreciate the definition given. I just think, this is, the context of this is a neighborhood with lots of private residents and a history of a restaurant prior to it that was often a good neighbor and sometimes a neartum. And so, if we're going to allow a new business to be a beer garden with food and events, I think, under a conditional use permit, I think we should be, before we vote on it, we should know what it is that the special, uh, public assembly is and do these events qualify?
But per the definition that Rich just read, I would say they don't qualify.
We're not even talking about the same thing here. So they're not public assemblies?
No, no.
This is a course of this gentleman running his business. Normal business, right? Normal business activity. Appreciate the discussion.
You, you want to keep it going on to number three?
Sure. Number three, live music events in a neighborhood setting. Uh, question, when does my music become noise? Answer, when it crosses the property line and in particular, when I hear it. Many households are located immediately adjacent to the business site, directly across on Mill Pond, which is Lake Beulah, and within one quarter mile in a southeastern direction. Town residents should enjoy a reasonable, should enjoy a reasonable expectation not to be annoyed, irritated, or have their quiet enjoyment, including sleep, disturbed. In addition, town residents as well as the town police department should not be imposed upon to act as the noise regulator by way of complaints and/or enforcement actions related to noise arising from a sole, sole source. No noise, music, sound problem currently exists. However, the applicant's business plan includes as many as three or four music events per week for twenty-four consecutive weeks, May through October, including the possibility of satellite or live stream background music during normal business hours. Possibility for neighborhood destruction and the potential collapse of a family-friendly business relationship is real, but can be addressed in advance as part of the business plan. I believe, a landscape architect who integrates ANSI, American National Standard Institute, recommendations for outdoor music events and public assemblies should be included in the CBE business plan. Music need not become neighborhood noise, but unimpeded, sound can travel upwards to two miles if it is not dampened by reliable, available technology. The regulation of sound immediately arising from a live event is the responsibility of the business operator and the person in charge on any given business day. Sound can be enjoyable music and not a neighborhood menace. Sound can be enjoyable music using sound calibration methods and sound mitigation techniques, some, some of which include installation of direct sound systems, permanently mounted speakers, directing sound to the immediate audience and not nearby residents. Note, the current site plan directs the speakers towards Mill Pond and nearby family residences. CBE should also include a perimeter decibel monitoring system, which is routinely calibrated to measure decibel readings and satisfy all claims of noise disruption in the surrounding neighborhood.
Discussion?
Well, there are established parameters of what's acceptable dB radius, levels.
ANSI has that.
Yeah, well, I, I believe it's stat- statutory.
Correct. Well, I'm not a hundred, well, I don't know for sure. I know there's statutes about time.
Yeah, until ten o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are, I don't know if they're actually statutory or just local parameters that they have established. I'm not quite sure how, but I know, having been in the business of doing sound professionally for many years, I had to face this all the time. I've traveled all over the country doing live shows outside. We always had to be aware of the decibel levels and the police were always aware of the decibel levels. And, you know, everybody played ball on this because you all understand that if you don't want to get shut down, you got to play, got to do things right. So it's not a difficult thing to control.
I, I don't think it is either. I think, you know.
I don't think it's part of what we're deciding here.
So on this, on this one, I think.
It's completely relevant to what we're deciding.
I think the events were, those clarifications were listed in the revise, in the revision that we received last time, you know, the original act and the events. So the, from, from what I recall, the, the ask for the ban stand was in hand. Maybe we can double check that. I think, to me, that ask, you know, where it reads small band or acoustic, that's how it was described. So it's not going to have rock bands. It's like a guitar, you know, or something like that. To me seems reasonable, but, and I don't think the applicant was asking for anything that seems intrusive that's going to leave the premises outside of someone playing guitar. It sounded like it's relatively quiet. So I think if we're going to decide on this, I, I think we should probably incorporate some language into, into the decision to, to frame that, the use of that ban stand along the lines of applicants asking for, so that if that is what they're, if that's all they're asking for, that's all, that's all we should look to frame.
Sure.
I have firsthand knowledge of an ongoing seven-year problem with an open bar, with music. I was part of the original agreements at this location and seven years later, they're still arguing about it. They just, this, the organizationally and using professional services, they just spent six months and two hundred thousand dollars to validate that the neighbors' complaints were correct, that there was, the music was too loud. We don't want to get there.
Understood. And that, I think to Ben's point, he, he would suggest that maybe we put some conditions in in a potential approach or a potential motion that it doesn't increase or go over X decibels or it doesn't, you know, I can't, we can say rock versus jazz versus.
I was thinking like, and I don't, I don't know music, but I was thinking like, well, if, if maybe you're allowed acoustic only, no amps, no electrical equipment attached.
It's decibels. It's volume. And my music is your noise. Again, trying to respect the many individuals that live in this general area. I, I think this is radically important. And it's, it's asking the owner to, on the front end, plan to keep decibels under NS, ANSI levels, to install a decibel monitoring, just install, maintain, evaluate, decibel monitoring system. And there are ways of including recommendations from landscape architects that can dampen that noise of music on-site and never become an issue. Because the last thing as, I won't be elected very long as a town supervisor. If the residents need to be the regulator about what is noise and what isn't noise, and the police department, the enforcer, I will tell you, quite, quite, coincidentally, at last month's town board meeting, as part of the monthly report of our police chief, he said, "We have ordinances that are vague, ambiguous and unenforceable." And he specifically talked about the noise ordinance. And this is where we ought not have an officer decide what's too loud at ten o'clock at night, or nine o'clock at night, or eight o'clock at night.
But who are we to decide what's too loud, sitting, sitting here as, as the plan commission? I, I think we're beating a dead horse. I think everybody's sensitive to noise levels and, and I think we could come up with a parameter in the condition. I think decibel, me personally, not the board, I think decibel meters and, and having a landscape plan that's going to limit sound is, is over, is overreaching, but that's just one, one person's opinion, opinion. So, if there's any, not any other discussion about this topic, I, I think we can move on. And not that I'm poo-pooing the noise level thing, I think what I'll do is I'll reach out to the applicant and see if I could get further clarification or something that would be amenable to you, Bill, and potentially the constituents.
I agree with you of the suggestions that are, I mean, those, these suggestions came out of the hotbed of the neighborhood arguments currently over noise.
Understood.
Number four, pervious asphalt versus pervious gravel, communal seating and environmental issues. So the building's site is within a floodplain and adjacent to wetlands. The applicant's plan states that quote, "The community seating area will be crushed stone-based and will be pervious," end quote. It also says, quote, "All of the subject space within the footprint of the prior approved double D's plans, so there will be no issues with floodplains," end quote. The applicant has also stated that environmental soil samples have been taken, but results were not available at the July fifth meeting of this mission. Historically, the site was a great launch and provided fuel and oil for its patrons. More recently, the property's surface was largely disturbed when the previous double D's restaurant was demolished and awaits landscaping, presumably including the removal of asphalt areas to create the above-mentioned pervious community gathering space. These combined factors require a thorough review of all Walworth County shoreline ordinances, including location of structures and proposed perimeter fencing, as well as setback requirements, if any.
Okay, all those things you just mentioned are, are more, are permit restrictions, not, again, I think, I think we're getting a little bit too into the weeds, especially on this one.
But you're saying they'll be addressed.
They will be addressed by either Vince or by the county when they get a permit.
Right, but it's not our, we don't have control over it.
And they're not, they're not asking, the applicants not asking for any variances in that regard or what have you. So if there was an issue there that came up during permitting, they'd come back.
He would have to deal with it.
It's, I'm satisfied with that. Lighting within number, number five, lighting within a neighborhood setting. There are no streetlights within the immediate area around the proposed business site. Homeowners should have a reasonable expectation to enjoy the night sky and evening darkness, which is one of the benefits of living in a rural community. The CBE plan specifies a quote, "Outdoor area with seating and lighting." The site pictures show what could be estimated as hundreds of lights for patron enjoyment. However, no information is provided about preserving the nighttime darkness while conducting normal business hours up till ten PM, six days a week. I think you're going to suggest this is a permit issue.
So this isn't. I talked to Vince. We do not, we do not require photometrics when, when we get, when we submit a permit. So, that being said, if we were to make that a condition, that it's zero foot candles at the property line, which is common in, in any community, if we were to add that to our, the conditions of our approval, the, the county would have to enforce that at permit time.
So this was a general concern of mine because what the, what the applicant was asking for seemed to accommodate in the area, low intensity lighting and things, but I, you know, they're not asking for floodlights or what have you. But I think that's something we want to make sure is specified in the decision if we were.
Agreed. I, I think that's an easy, you know, like I said, zero foot candle at the property line is pretty much any community that I've worked in is what they ask for.
What does that mean, zero?
There's no light that goes past your, your light line.
Because to me, it's, it becomes, I mean, if you have floodlights and things, it becomes a safety issue with traffic on that road. It's, it becomes a nuisance to neighbors.
I agree that I don't think he has any plans to, to flood this and, and play night basketball. Uh, but, but agreed that, you know, that to me is something that could be dealt with as a condition of approval. Uh, and that I don't think is out aligned with any other municipalities.
I, I do have one last one. It's, it's the parking issues. The, the now understood capacity is one hundred and thirty, I think. And that was derived by a county funding up, which assumed two people in a car with thirty-seven, um, car spaces available. And the math works once you add two ADA spots and twelve motor vehicles. That is a hundred and thirty. I do have concerns about that capacity. More importantly, I have concerns about the parking itself because when individuals are pulling into the site where the parking is, they need to back out onto J, if I understand the setup correctly. Consequently, there may be more space necessary and that may impact on the plan.
So, so I would also say that this, this is not our, he, he has enough parking per code. And if, if Walworth County doesn't want any of him backing out into Highway J, that's more of their, so we're, we're here more conceptually. And I'm not saying we shouldn't dig into the details because that's where the devil is and I, and I hear you. But to tell him how many parking spots he needs?
I'm not asking you to do that. I just worked with his numbers.
So I worked, I looked through this too because the, the parking number had changed and we talked about it the past time. And I think it, it helps to understand just the footprint of the property approximately, how many people might be, you know, doing, you know, buying drinks, buying food there. I, I do think the, the capacity, the final capacity number, final parking layout, the final planes, we, we leave it to the county and their expertise.
Yeah, I, I, the only, I, I thought to myself, you know, what are the odds that average car is going to have three people in it? And I just think, I think his, his capacity is, he's not going to be getting the number of patrons he wants, but that's his business.
And, and again, it's, it's not unlike any other community I've worked in. There's a parking calculation that you have to meet. He's met the parking calculation in the town of East Troy and county of Walworth.
I'm more concerned about people backing out onto J. Cause that speed limit is thirty-five. It dropped from forty-five within a few hundred yards. It's, it's fast in there. And it's dark and light. Those are my concerns for public, for our discussion.
Understood. Thank you. Is there any other discussion of points that we want to bring up amongst commissioners or anything for the applicant at this point?
I have one. And the applicant clarified that our, you know, compared to the, the food and beverages on-site and the food and beverage carryout. I think the applicant said, you know, food and beverage to be eaten within the dense area. And then the carryout's also about, I, I'm for nine now and I don't think the applicant's looking for anything like this, but if there's, if there's glass, you know, bottles or what have you leaving as part of carryout, I can imagine there'd be, you know, there could be patrons walking across the street using that pure what have you. And then you have glass on the road and then someone drops a glass bottle or glass here in the lane. So I, I would like to incorporate something into the decision that, you know, no, no glass bottles or what have you.
And I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to that because I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't know that we even have the authority to say what, you know, if he can have a glass or plastic or cardboard straws, because we don't like plastic straws, you know. Um, I, I guess I'm not necess, if, if you feel strongly about it and, and we're want it, to want it to be in a, a condition of approval. I don't know if they're to hold up once it made it through the county. Again, we're advisory. We could say, this is what we're advising. We don't want smashed bottles all over Highway J. Nor do I. No, I don't think anybody in this room does. Maybe that's something I could reach out to, to the applicant and maybe he could put it in his clarification. Cause I, with, with some of the things we want to. Because I, with, with some of the things we want to possibly get in the conditions of these, I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight. I mean, unless anybody disagrees with me. Because I think we could, you know, go ahead.
I, I do feel like we could make a decision. I mean, there's a lot here, but I don't know if there's anything new.
Okay.
I, I would feel comfortable making that decision personally.
Okay.
Mr. Cook, may I advise you? I just found a text.
So we, we're, this is not open, this is not open to public discussion. I'm sorry.
No, this is not about the discussion of this. This is about your legal liability, and I would like to give you that.
I, I don't need to know my legal liability. I know my own legal liability, so I don't need to hear. We're having our discussion. This is...
Well, you do not begin into account a legal agreement that our group made with the legal...
This is our plan commission, and this is how we operate. And I'm not going to have you, I, do I have to have you removed? Because you're not going to interrupt my meeting. This meeting's going to happen the way it's planned, and that's it.
But that will be very expensive for you if there's a lawsuit.
So be it.
From the group of us that started it that said, in our agreement, and now we have the original agreement...
But this is not the forum to discuss it. This is not the forum to discuss it, and I'm not going to have it. We're going to finish our meeting, and if I have to have the officer remove you, then that's what I'll have to do. Because we are in an open, public quorum where you're not allowed to talk right now. So I, I apologize for being short.
The Open Meetings Act allows you to receive comments that are not about matter at hand...
And I'm not receiving comment right now.
...only about the legal, the legal liability of an existing, pre-existing agreement that puts you in jeopardy if you counterfeiting it.
I'm not.
I'm just letting you know that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we're going to finish our meeting right now.
Okay, but you do have some legal jeopardy.
Duly noted.
Okay, thank you.
On the, on the issue of, I think the applicant's here.
Yes.
So I wonder, you know, with, with the music and things, I wonder, there's a lot discussed here. If we could ask the applicant if he's amenable to any restrictions there.
Go ahead.
But, you know, so I think a few things were mentioned, ANSI levels, decibel monitoring, you know, acoustic versus electric restrictions. Are you open to any restrictions?
So I guess my point is, I live on Mill Lake for, since 2015. The Bahai faith camp every night has their chants, and I can hear them that are 300 yards away. And it's loud, but it's fine. I'm not trying to get anything louder than what the Bahai chants are doing out there. And again, it's acoustic. It's more background music. I'm not having Iron Maiden, you know, playing at the thing. It's going to be soft music. People are going to want to have conversations. So I don't really see the need to have like a decibel monitoring system. This is, look, I'm spending over a million dollars of my own money here. It's important to me to have something that's nice. I'm 52 years old. I'm not a kid that's, you know, into, you know, drugs or anything like that. I'm trying to just run a reputable business. And frankly, I'm just surprised by some of the comments.
Would it be acceptable to you if we added a restriction that acoustic only, no, no microphones, no amps?
Well, you're limiting, you know, my way to make money and, you know, I think that, you know, I should have a right to do certain things.
Would you be willing to hire a landscape architect to integrate American National Standard recommendations in your outdoor music events?
I don't know what that means, and I don't know what the cost is. I'm trying to do this as efficient as possible. You know, I, huh? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. I mean, if you're saying, you know, I can only have small bands, fine. I'll take away the two large events. But just to let you know, Double D's did have a large event a few times a year on their, yeah, Labor Day. And, you know, I'm not asking for anything that hasn't already happened on that property.
Well, Labor Day, they did it for two days, if I may, and I live two miles away, and I heard, I sang along with them. Because it was that loud.
Yeah, I mean, we're not...
So anybody within two miles should not even know you exist.
Yeah. Again, I guess the high faith camp is my kind of, you know, everyone hears it on the lake. And it's, you know, it's loud, but I'm not trying to be louder than that. I'm just trying to have a nice, you know, soft background music for people. And as far as those events, I overstated those. There's no way I'm going to do that many of them. It's just the county requested, because of the public use, that you need to have events. And this all stemmed from the Deuster Beck Brewing Company. Someone complained that there was, you know, too many events over there, so they wanted them spelled out. And I did them on an individual basis, and you're correct that there could be three events going on at the same time. So, and the, the public assembly, the county said that as far as the food truck thing, you can only have two, because originally I wanted to do three. And the county said, per public assembly, you can only have two food trucks. So I'm assuming by having public assembly, that takes care of the food issue.
I, that I'd love to see.
Yeah, and that's what Darren said, so at the county. Yeah.
What about, where, where did your stage be?
It's on the, on the run. Yeah, so it was...
What if you projected just on, wait from Mill Lake towards the...
It's not even going towards the lake. It's actually going towards Jim Butler's place, which he actually supported the project.
Oh, okay.
So it's not going towards the lake.
Well, there's, there's two set of speakers. You know, I, I...
There's no set of speakers on that, actually, I don't think. Well, maybe there is. But, I mean, they would basically be planted this way.
I think it's, I'll reiterate, it's radically important that you consider sound, that it not become noise because it's just going to break down.
Yeah, the last thing.
Community response. And I, I've lived this. And I retired, and they're still fighting about those decibel readings. And now they're spending crazy money to try to fix something they could have done on the front end with engineering principles and for your end on protection in terms of monitoring sound coming out of your place.
The last thing I'm trying to do is be a nuisance to the neighbors. Let's just put it that way. It's supposed to be an amenity for the town and the community. I mean, the East Troy Square has food trucks and music, and it's a gathering place. I'm just trying to do something that will benefit the town, so.
Dr. Reddick said, so to clarify, are you...
Well, we don't need any, any public comment, please, because we're trying to have our meeting, and the, the little comments are frustrating and, and not necessary.
Are, are you, are you open with, would a restriction required to acoustic only be acceptable to...
I, I'd like to, maybe, I don't know. I mean, this is getting...
I mean, it's, it's our decision. I, I know what you're, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. If that's something that is amenable to us as a board, and we want to put that out there. But I, I hear what you're saying.
I think I have an answer.
Okay.
I, I think by including in your planning phase, a landscape architect who can give you recommendations on your sound delivery systems, including the, the speakers that you purchase and the stage that you make and the plants that you put around it and the, and where you point your stage. I think you could win, you could win the community over for a few dollars and never have a fight on your hands.
Well, I'm not planning on having any fights, so, yeah.
Well, good. Then it sounds to me like you're willing to consider a landscape architect who would integrate ANSI recommendations into your outdoor music venue. And I'll give, I'll give you a copy of my comments, so you have it.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion amongst commissioners or any questions of the applicant? I mean, Ben, if, if you feel like you, you could make a, a motion and you want to make a motion, if I'll be it for me.
I'd like to make a motion to table this event until the net first meeting, I guess, of the planning commission.
We have a motion to table. Would anybody like to second that motion? Motion fails.
I'm going to get a, I'm going to make a motion just to frame it, open it, and then maybe we can discuss the motion.
Sure. The floor is yours.
Bear with me.
Yeah, get ready, Jim.
I motion, we approve the conditional use for P A 18180001. I just want to note that the hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. children allowed on campus till 9:00 p.m. with parent regarding. Acoustic music only without decay of any microphones or electronic monitors. Low intensity, low intensity lighting on campus as per plan, so as not to interfere with the roadway. Limiteding to two food trucks for the food service and the 40-foot bar container.
Fence?
That's my motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just clarify that last part. We got the fence?
40-foot, 40-foot bar, bar container.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
It's all in the plan. I just thought I'd enumerate some of it.
Other than maybe the acoustic.
I don't think the acoustic you can keep in there. I mean, so can you have a microphone in front of an acoustic guitar?
Well, Ben specifically said no microphone, so completely acoustic.
And...
I think that's what we're reaching.
So I'm just getting the motion out there. If we, if we want a second for discussion, I think it's kind of as matter of...
I, I, yeah, and I guess it, it would address, you know, noise concerns. It would curb noise concerns. I, I guess, just as one member of this commission, I, I think that's a reasonable motion. Again, open for discussion. I mean, I, I'd hate to see it, you know, get shot down based on, you know, you think there should be a microphone, and he doesn't listen to the microphone, you know. So I'd like to, you know, have, have that discussion and come up with a motion that I think we could all act on.
Can we define that section about noise, music level, decibel level in a different way rather than talking about microphones or speakers?
A loud zero?
Just, yeah.
Well, we have a motion to table. We want to just...
Is there a second?
Yeah, first big can.
Well, we, we open it up for discussion.
Oh, before, okay. Well, we could have, I mean, we could have amended. I, I don't know how we follow.
Well, there are accepted parameters for outdoor music. And this should adhere to those reasonable community standards of noise levels or music levels, however you want to oppose it, that are not at a nuisance level.
And leave it to the police chief.
That's how, that's how the county puts it in their discussion. They, they talk about noise criteria.
Is there, do they have something you could read for us?
No, not really. It's very...
Well, section 65.74. I mean, do, do you feel like you could amend your motion or...
What do you have in hand, a second on the motion for discussion?
Can't we have a discussion on the motion before it's seconded?
The motion's seconded, discussion's voted.
We're having our meeting, if you wouldn't mind, for the last time, please. So we, we have a motion. Do we have a second on this motion? Okay, motion, motion dies.
All right.
Do we have a, a different motion? Would anybody like to make a, or would you like to make another motion?
Try again and just, as, and procedure, I think we could just get it, if we're, if it's closed because it's complicated, we could get a second, no matter, you know, we don't, all right, I'll try again. I motion to approve the conditional use of P A 18180001. For a container bar and two food trucks, hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. children allowed with parent regarding until 9:00 p.m. with the live music and small band stand. Limiting noise to reasonable, non-nuance level per county statute. Food and drink will be limited to the fence area on the plant. Food and drink will also be allowed for carryout.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is any other business amongst commissioners? Then I would take a motion to adjourn.
I would like to move that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.